...sixteen, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Requested that Pastor Jim DePalma from the Encounter Church to our invocation this evening. Pastor DePalma?
Can we stand and go to the Lord in prayer? Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to be alive. We thank you for this incredible village that has incredible favor afforded to us. We pray, Lord, for every living being in this village. We pray your hand of protection over them. We pray for our mayor. We pray for all the village officials. We pray for our police department, our fire department, all those upholding the law. We pray your protection over each and every one of them and their families. And, Lord, we pray your special hand of protection, especially now, over the United States of America. And over this night, may everything go well, we pray, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor DePalma.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Brings us to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk will be considered and acted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on the consent agenda items at this point. Is there anything anybody wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove the bills or the board minutes.
Board minutes for an adjustment, and just for the record, there was a slight correction in one of the statements in the minutes, and we've each got a copy of that, so we'll remove that. Anything else? Anybody would like to add?
Mr. President, I'd like to add item 12D, the creation of a Class B liquor license. 12D-1.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is there any reason why we couldn't add the F-2 AT&amp;T License Agreement Amendment?
Anybody have a problem with that? All right. So entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda, removing the minutes. Voted separately for the correction. It will also include the bills list. The consent agenda will add item D-1 under license and ordinance, creation of a Class B liquor license. It will also include the Bartlett High School homecoming parade request, the Bartlett High School homecoming fireworks display request, and we're adding item F-1 under Public Works Committee, the AT&amp;T License Agreement Amendment. So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, second by trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the corrected minutes from the board and committee minutes September 6, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is a word from our treasurer's report. Mr. Martin Noix.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out with the sales tax report for the month ended May 2016. Total sales tax year-to-date is $186,214, and that represents a 9.07% increase over the same time period last year. The motor fuel tax allotment report through June of 2016, total revenue $151,876, and that represents a 0.56% increase over the same time period last year.
Do they have any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, we will move on to the president's report. The first item on the president's report this evening is the Pride and Ownership Awards. Village Bartlett is pleased to recognize the winners of the 2016 Pride and Ownership Awards. The Pride and Ownership Awards Program was started in 1996 in Bartlett to recognize owners who do an outstanding job in maintaining their property. The village calls out for nominees at the beginning of the summer, and volunteer judges visit all the nominated properties, evaluating them on general appearance, landscaping, curb appeal, and creativity. And this year, we have four single-family and two commercial winners. So I will start with the, and some of these folks aren't here, but I will start with the third-place single-family home winner, Ms. Charlene Holochek. I don't believe is here. And you'll each get a Home Depot gift card. Charlene's home is at 416 Chara Court. Second place, if you're here, please step up, is Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Esenbacher at 105 North Hale Avenue. Is Cheryl here all right?
Woo!
And also in first place, we have Ms. Yvonne Barr Olson of 450 Ford Lane. So Bob and Yvonne. And for the commercial Pride and Ownership, second-place winner is J.C.'s Restaurant. Is there somebody from J.C.'s here? I don't believe so. They're probably working. And in first place was the Hanover Township Senior Center. If you haven't been by there, it's a really beautiful place, so if you can step on up, that would be great. The village congratulates all the nominated and winning property owners and thanks them for helping to keep Bartlett beautiful. And the winners received the yard sign and will be listed in the Bartletter as well. So thank you again for all of them.
Could somebody help me try and win it next year?
I'll nominate you, Tia. My wife doesn't even let anybody in our yard. And the next item we have for the president's report is a Class D liquor license request from Hanover Township, Class D liquor license. I'll entertain a motion to approve this Class D liquor license application for Hanover Township for an event they're holding October 13, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
That motion carries. You guys can take that back with you if I sign it. Anybody have any questions for staff? It's time of the meeting, we'll entertain questions for staff from the board.
I don't have a question, but I would encourage everybody who's available on Sunday to volunteer for the cake stand classic. I exchanged emails with those folks earlier today, and they still very much need volunteers. The good news and the bad news is volunteer check-in is at 4:45 a.m., but the good news, good part of that is you're done by 10, so you can still make it to church. So certainly, if you can, volunteer Sunday, please do so, because they really do need, they need help, and this is going to be successful.
Yeah.
Will you be there at 4:45?
Four hundred and seven signed up so far.
Four hundred and eight.
Four hundred and...
Signing my son up today, so...
All right. Will you be there at 4:45?
Yeah, well, yeah.
He's still breathing.
I'll see you then.
If I'm still breathing, then I'm going to go and do, I guess they need help with checking people in and handing things out, you know, volunteer-type stuff. So, yeah, there's the 400 racers, but there's also the logistical support.
Yeah.
So don't overlook that if you've got some extra time at 4:00 in the morning.
I think, I believe if I'm not mistaken, trustee Hopkins and trustee Cammer will be joining me on the race.
Yep.
So, go ahead.
And trustee Erins?
Are you going to ride, too?
Oh, are you riding? Are you riding, Michael?
I am.
Wow.
Those training wheels really paid off.
They did.
Right, so 400 and some people, so if we can get more, that would be great. I think they're still open for registration. That brings us to the next point in our meeting, which is the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point, if anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Three minutes start when the button goes?
We're pretty flexible with that, so...
Pushed it, it went off, knocked it back on. Is it on?
Lit.
Is there a green light on it?
Yep.
Okay, you're on.
Okay. Should have put these on before. I wasted 10 seconds.
We'll give you as much time as you want.
We have an intersection where...
Sure. Do you mind stating your name and your...
Oh, yeah. See, I figured you'd say that, but Terry Pearson, 1178 Foxborough, beautiful town of Bartlett, just moved here a year ago. My neighbor is across the street. We live on the corner of Foxborough and Brewster, where it's a Speedway. There are no slow signs, there's no stop signs, there's no any kind of sign, and it is a school pickup place, and it's been getting progressively worse. Appreciate if you could look into that. As we get into the fall season, the leaves, I know the village graciously puts up all these trees in the parkway, but somebody's got to clean them up, and I don't see you guys out there very often, but a big part of that is, if it's coming off the tree and it's going down the sewer, we're going to pay to have somebody come and clean the sewer, correct? Same with the grass. If there isn't an ordinance, whether we cut it ourselves or whether we have someone cut it, it shouldn't be allowed to be going down the drain. I have a sewer right on my corner, which usually floods. Last year, I went out and took eight bags full of these little bitty leaves off of the tree of my neighbor. They would have all been, well, half of them would have been in the sewer. And there's no clock, so I don't know. You'll have to tell me when I'm out of time. Junk collectors. I put a leaf blower, sorry, out of the street. The phone rang, I went back in. Where do you think that leaf was? The blower was gone. Do we charge a permit? Do we charge a fee? If not, why not? You don't even know who's coming. I've seen people get out of the trucks, go and look in the garbage cans to see if there's something they want. We're paying to have the garbage picked up anyway. Why don't we get some kind of revenue to offset that? And as a senior, my friend here is a senior, we need all the breaks we can get. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Terry. A friend of mine lost his lacrosse net that way, left it on the curb, and it was gone. But we do need to think about that. I don't know of any villages that have permits, but there's got to be some way to... The more expensive steel gets, the more ambitious they get. Anyone else?
I'm at 1179 Foxborough Court, across from the complainer.
Okay, Andy, just one second. Terry, just so you know, we'll have the chief check out that speed situation, too, for signage and stuff. That's the chief of police, yes.
Yes, because I'm worried they're going to come and visit me in the middle of the night, because I'm right at the... My complaint, my big complaint, is people that don't pick up after their dogs. I'm picking it up off my sidewalk. I mean, if you're that lazy, get rid of the dog. Bottom line is, you've got to pick up. I pick up after mine, I got to pick up after other people's. But when I step in the sidewalk at 5:00 in the morning, I'm not a happy camper. You know, so I mean, something should be done about that. Is there any way we can get some signs posted to pick up after their dogs? You know, I mean, everybody else has got them. I came from a community where they posted it. Not that it helped much, but it's a warning that if they get caught, they're going to get fined.
There is an ordinance against that.
We have it on our homepage on the web, but, you know, we can emphasize that in our Bartletter that goes to every home in Bartlett and raise some awareness to that.
Well, I think people can't read. If they can, you put in braille. Walking their dogs, they got to pick up, you know. I'm tired of picking it up on my sidewalk, on my grass. I would never get in a war because it looks like a dog ground. And the other thing, we've got neighbors. You know, I moved in an area I thought was really nice when I first moved there, but people just don't clean their property. It's in the cul-de-sac. I don't know the address, but it's, looks terrible. We've got trees growing out of trees, coming out the bottom, and you can't even walk on a sidewalk because it hits you in the face.
You can check that out, too.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, what's the address again?
My address? I'm at 1179 Foxborough Court. This is on Fox, was it Foxborough Lane there, Terry?
No, it's the same court.
No, no.
Okay.
Lane, yeah. I guess you got a lane, you got a court. I'm in a court. You know, and is there a permit, anything regarding renters? I mean, what do you do with them people?
We don't have a registry right now for renters.
Because I know where I came from, to get a renter in a property, you had to buy a permit.
Right.
It's $150 bucks a year, you know, just to be a, to rent your property out. You know, we don't know who's renting, they don't clean up. I mean, if somebody went out and looked, they'd probably condemn the building.
Something that...
And not give you the address either, so...
I think that's going to be a topic of discussion in our next planning meeting, so...
Okay, great. That's all I got to say right now.
Thank you, Andy.
All right, thank you.
Mark Morando, 601 Foster Avenue. And it's kind of in line with what the other gentlemen have been saying. Foster is a drag strip. It's terrible. Not only the speeding, but the reckless driving, the lawn jobs. There's kids, I have a four-year-old daughter, she loves playing outside, there's, you know, the village and the neighborhood has tons of little kids. Not once, but twice, but five times, you know, we've been out there trying to keep the kids, and, you know, cars come into a screeching halt because the kids are out playing, and, you know, it's inevitable, you do your best you can to keep the kids in the, you know, on the property and so on. It's ridiculous. Something needs to happen with it. And I've discussed it with multiple neighbors, and they all say they call and complain. So I know it's nothing new.
Okay.
The lawn jobs are terrible, my property, our neighbors' properties, we all work very hard. I would actually like to be considered for that community award next year because I, we just did a ton of work. I'm very pleased with it, very proud of it, and so, you know, if anything can help, you know. And then the second thing is the dogs. People just let their dogs do whatever, go wherever, do whatever. I mean, they've got all new lawn, all new sod in front of the house, and they let their dogs run back and forth and pee wherever they want to pee. And, you know, I ask them kindly, you know, excuse me, you know, we just did all this work. Can you not let your dog run around? They look at you like you're some foreigner, and they walk away. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
And we can probably get a community officer over there once in a while. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
Did you want a response from the chief? Do you want a response from the chief?
Yeah, we familiar with this speeding issue over in Foster?
I'm sorry, speeding?
Has that been a comment in the past at all?
Yeah, we put that on our rotating watch list. We had our traffic unit out there not too long ago, they wrote several tickets. If we get complaints, we do make it a priority. The bad news in Bartlett is we have a speeding issue throughout town. The good news in Bartlett is that's our issue. It's not violent crime, so it is our priority. We do have a rotating unit that works through it, and I'll be honest with you, right now, I've got five police officers working, and we're stacking calls. So it's limited resources with unlimited complaints, so we address it the best we can, and we ask for cooperation from the neighborhood as well. If you have a violation, an ordinance violation, and you see it, and you can get a, you can witness it, it's always nice to have a complaining witness, so that it's easier for us to sign a citation on her behalf.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else like to address the board? Hearing none, we will move on. On our agenda, the standing committee reports. Our first standing committee report this evening is under planning and zoning. Chairman Ranky?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on planning and zoning tonight. It's the 929 Rosewood Court variation for an accessory structure. Before I turn it over to Jim, since we did talk to this, about this, the last meeting, I'll move to approve ordinance 2016...
78?
78, an ordinance granting an accessory structure building separation variance for 929 Rosewood Court.
Second. Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cammer. And I believe Chairman Ranky, you're looking for just an explanation from...
I mean, do we have anything additional since our last meeting?
Yes, I was just getting to that. We have, at your last meeting, just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the location. This is just a plat showing the yellow area where the addition or the accessory structure is constructed. Going through those. You had asked for pictures showing the separation between the accessory structure and the house. Brian went out, took some pictures. Here's one showing the gap from the existing home. Right here, but right in this area, there's a little opening, you can see that goes straight out to the exterior. This is the structure with the post and a crossbeam that's holding it up. So that's this one picture. Here's a, other, two more showing the gap between the house structure again, the structure here, and then the gap going, looking up to the roof. So, and then this third one, just again, showing the existing home here, and then this is the structure that was built, and there is obviously, it's all open in this area. And then just another shot from that, that same shot from the outside, again, looking in, this separation here, and then just one more, a couple more. But those are the additional pictures that you had requested. And the petitioner just gave me a letter from her architect stating that the screen porch is on top of its own full concrete foundation and completely separate from the existing house structure. With ample landscaping and open space, the screen porch additional will not affect the character of the rear yard, and hoping for a favorable decision to allow the screen porch to be built in the requested rear yard. And that was, that's from the architect who did the work that you saw in those plans. It's basically the same as we discussed. It is before you. Mrs. Polarecki is here, if you have any questions of her.
I do have a couple of questions. What would you say is the purpose for having a distance requirement between a principal structure and accessory structure?
I would say it's for a couple reasons. Primarily, it's separation for, typically, it was a required separation for a shed where you could have flammable stored in the shed, and it's a fire protection kind of separation. That's one of the primary reasons. Also, there's an aesthetic component to it, so that there isn't a crowding look on the, in the yard. Generally, those are the two main reasons, I think. Typically, your fire separation is the main reason.
I mean, how are you going to, would you be able to re-site the house with that accessory structure so close to it?
Well, this picture kind of shows a little better. There is siding on some of the areas, but, you know, you're going to be able to do this. This side is going to be a little tricky. I don't know how you're going to get in there, but whether they intend on siding that side, I don't know.
Well, I mean, where I'm going with this is, what about a subsequent purchaser? Who's going to move into this house, may not know about the variance, and then they say, well, we've got an addition on the property, let's just put, you know, enclose it, put the siding all the way around it. But it's not an addition, it's an accessory structure, even though, you know, butts up against the house.
Structure can be removed as well. If it's not attached to the house, if they're not going to like it before buying the house, we can take it apart and just sell the house as it was original built.
And you applied for a variance back in 2007, right?
Right.
For the other addition?
It was the kitchen addition. We basically didn't have a kitchen in the house.
Okay. Why didn't, just out of curiosity, not to be rude, but why didn't you approach the village when you constructed this thing?
I didn't know that we need, we was planning just the roof, didn't, planning for the windows. After we heard about the old Zika and stuff, we wanted to put the nets, just because there is so many mosquito, you cannot even sit in the backyard.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I didn't see any, during the hearing session of the zoning appeal, there was, I didn't see any complaints from neighbors. Were there any?
They did not show up at the zoning board hearing, but the initial complaint came from a neighbor on, when they called about the structure being built. But they did not show up. They got noticed, but they did not show up at the public hearing.
One neighbor was here on the first hearing.
Right.
She was on our side. She said she has nothing against our structure.
Well, and I mean, certainly understand where it is a challenge for us, because the hallmark of a variance is hardship.
I understand.
You know, if somebody's lot is strangely shaped and they need to fit a house in there, I think we can all agree about the hardship. But here, the hardship is, you know, sort of self-created, and that is problematic.
I understand, but if we will put the structure 10 feet away from the house, it would be so crowded, basically, we wouldn't have even the backyard.
It appears to me that it's already built.
I, yeah, I would...
Doing this backwards.
Well, you know, they say it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission, and, you know...
Are you anticipating building the other wall in between your house and, because, can you flip to that other picture that shows the clock thing? No, keep going. Right there. So there's no wall in between there and the house, right?
Right.
Are you putting screens there, or what do you...
Just the screens. We are not going to put wall all the way to the house itself. We just maybe enclose this with the screen. That's, not planning to put any other walls.
That's all I have. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk, we have a motion, we have a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
Erins?
Cammer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you. Chairman... Chairman Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have is under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daney.
Mr. President, I'm very happy to say there's nothing on the agenda this evening to report.
Thank you, Chairman Daney. Next item, understanding committee reports, License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Aaron's.
Well, and gratefully, there's, all of the three items on our committee have been handled on the consent agenda, so we're done.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item we have, standing committee reports, is under the Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, President Wallace. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, under our standing committee, it's Public Works Committee, Chairman Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two things under the Public Works Committee this evening. One of them, the AT&amp;T license agreement on the consent agenda. The other one is the Illinois Route 59 and Sterns Road intersection. It's working with IDOT at the intersection for the improvements of Illinois 59 and Sterns Road. The improvements include the work the village is responsible to pay for, emergency vehicle preemption, and new sidewalk agreement between the village and IDOT and Route 59 and Sterns Road intersection. Improvements is required for this work to be included, and the village is recommending they approve the IGA with IDOT. That being said, I move the village approve Resolutions 2016--
80? 80.
80. Dash 80. Resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Bartlett and the State of Illinois Department of Transportation.
I will second that.
Moved by trustee Hammer, second by trustee Daney. Is there any discussion?
Yes. My question is, is that, is the state now working that they actually have the funds to work on this? Or are we--
This is the next step in moving towards the entire intersection reconstruction, but I think they're, they have not changed their timeframe, which is to begin to work on that next summer, the beginning? Yeah.
Okay, so we're just earmarking the money for this?
Yeah, this is just doing some of the legwork upfront.
Okay. Thank you.
It looks like the federal funds are paying for the bulk of the work there, too, right? Yeah. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
A motion carries.
Mr. President, that's all we have under Public Works tonight.
What about this delicious? Next item we have this evening is under New Business. One of the items, and if anyone else has any new business, they can bring it up, but one of the items that we have listed is a liquor license application. It, you guys, you've reviewed the owners, the owner of Sunny Tropro Group Incorporated of Delicious Crepes and Roadies is requesting a Class B license. The Class B license allows for retail sale of beer and wine for use of consumption on the premises from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. All of the information that they included in their packet has been checked over. Indicates that the applicant satisfies all the requirements for licensing, for license issuance. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to--
This is your, let's see.
Class B.
Yeah, it's yours, but the board's consent. No, no, no. Pardon me. If there's no objection--
Okay. So there's no vote necessary. If there's no objections, I intend to issue this license. Anyone have any objections? All right. Anybody else with new business? Questions? All right, we will be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting, and also, as a part of the committee of the whole meeting this evening, we will be adjourned the committee of the whole into executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation pursuant to Section 2C 11 of the Open Meetings Act. We'll also be discussing in the executive session, the selection of a person to fill a public office pursuant to Section 2C 3 of the Open Meetings Act. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.